Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of fourteen April 2020 is now called to order. I'd ask those that come in to our City Hall chambers this evening if they would sign the roster before they leave. Also, if you have cell phones, please put them on mute. We'll call a member. Daniel?
Councilmember Steve Strand. Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markgraf.
Here.
And Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here this evening in our City Council chambers, also those on Channel fourteen, which will be viewing our council meetings on Wednesday evenings. I just have a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. Last week, our community was saddened to hear of the death of Pelican Rapids School Superintendent Dr. Ed Richardson. There will be a memorial service, which will be livestreamed on Larson Funeral Home. It will be a celebration of life for Dr. Richardson. This will be Thursday at eleven a.m., April sixteenth. And our next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-eighth at five p.m. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we'd all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Citizens comments. Citizens comments. I don't see anyone in the audience. I would ask council members this evening, when you speak, if you speak a little louder than normal so we, our voices magnify, so those watching on Zoom will be able to hear us. Item number three is addition and deletions to the agenda, agenda additions or deletions. Are there any? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same. Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number four A is approval of minutes of the council meetings of March thirty-first, 2020, and April second, 2020. Item four B is approval accounts payable listing. Item four C one is police chief report. Four C two is street and park report, and four C three is financial report. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number five is library report, and that is in our packet. Councilman Markgraf, do you have anything to add to that?
I was not in attendance due to family emergency.
I was at the meeting. They talked about, three of the townships had submitted their donations. They're waiting for others to trickle in. Granted, the, a two percent raise, retroactive back to first of the year. And they talked about the possibility of an additional two percent this year, or the possibility of asking for a five percent next year to make up the difference, to stay within the pay equity. Approved the sick leave policy that was presented from the city. They are going to be starting curbside pickup again today, I believe it was. So they're trying to get back in as normal a routine as they can with not being open. And then we have the library roof that they talked about. They put off their decision to find out what we talk about tonight. And then they are going to have a special meeting Wednesday at twelve, tomorrow at twelve. That's it.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the library report that is in our packet?
So moved.
Second?
Sure.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion.
Question about, you said they talked about the townships?
Yes.
How much are they pledging, or how much?
They didn't give a number. They just, I don't know if that was included in the financial report. They didn't, they didn't give a number specific per township. They just listed the, listed the three townships that had submitted donations already and...
And that's how much?
They didn't say a number.
They didn't say?
They didn't give a number of the donation. They just said that three had donated.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number six is library roof bid discussion. We have your superintendent Brian Olson here to speak to that. Brian?
Yes, thank you. I think you all got a copy of these emailed to you or sent them to us here. We had the bid opening last Thursday. Ended up with two bids. And as you can see on the bid tabulation, they're quite a ways apart in what they're doing. So I guess the city, if you look at the project scope on the first page, where the recommendation is from, from the architect to approve A and R Roofing Company to do the job, and then I guess that's what we need to discuss if we want to move forward with it. And then I guess the library board will make a decision based on what you decide. It was talked about, you know, do we, they're high, you know, they seem high. Do we go back to the drawing board? Well, like in any other project, we all know of, if we go back to the drawing board, we know where the numbers are going to be. They're going to be at that two twenty-two or higher because that is a public number. So right now, I believe we have in the library roof fund, two hundred and one thousand dollars towards this earmarked for this project. Two, oh, fourteen. That changed since this morning, or this afternoon. Two hundred and fourteen thousand towards this project. So with that being said, if we, if we accept the base bid and then alternate number A, or letter A, and that is infilling that roof on the southwest corner of, that has that look, and that was, I had all this pulled up.
Fourteen one ninety.
Yeah, I know what it is. I had the total lined up there. I'm sorry. And then it... So it's a total of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars difference in those, with adding that. We did talk about the soffit, patient gutters. I don't know that they're in, it's worth thirty or forty thousand dollars if we can pick a color that will match the existing white that's on the building. If I say anything wrong, Kevin, please speak up. I'm just going off what I remember from our... We also talked about that alternate C wouldn't have to be, that's an additional eighty-five hundred dollars. We could probably hire local to do that for less than that, if we, if we choose to do that in the future. And that is removing that cab canopy on the north side of the building.
Permanently removing it?
Permanently removing it, yeah. They've had some issues with melting and stuff like that in the wintertime, so it's, it fell off. So it comes down to you guys, what you'd like to do.
Any discussion from the council? Do I hear a motion?
So we're looking for, if we have the two hundred and fourteen thousand in the roof fund as is, and we just, if we do the base bid and the alternate A, we're looking at a shortfall of twenty-two thousand.
Correct.
So where would we come up with the other twenty-two thousand?
They got liquor savings. We have a pretty happy savings account in the liquor store, and I think that's the obvious place. I think there's enough in there to cover, easily cover this, but also, you know, we're going to be talking about the furnace replacements and stuff too. That would come out of the same funds.
They're both things that need to be done. You know, coming down, I haven't got the numbers yet on the HVAC system. That's another day, but that's going to have to be done also. We have to keep that in mind. So, but the roof, we planned this roof for many years, trying to save money for it, and here we are. So I guess if...
The longer we wait, the more money has been in the corner.
This price will never go down, unfortunately.
What would the council like to do?
Was that to include, I didn't, I didn't study the bid or anything, that we have to go up to a thicker plywood?
That includes putting the plywood. That number includes everything that was in the bid documents and in the specs for the book. Yes, adding five-inch plywood on the roof, entire roof will need that. So that included that.
I'm going to sit relatively quiet. Sit on both boards.
Other council members?
You were talking about alternate A?
Yes.
What was your opinion on that again?
Well, the alternate A is, it's that opening, that cutout hole that's in the roof over the, what entrances?
I would say the meeting room entrance is on the southwest.
That's south. There's that hole in the architectural design, the hole that got put in there that is a pain in the drain. So that alternate was, is to cover that with plywood and just make that part of the roof and eliminate that. Does it need to be there? I mean, does that alternate need to be included? Probably not, but it would be.
It has caused many issues with winter maintenance in that area, though, and that's what we're, that's kind of why it started coming up.
A lot of maintenance problems.
And it would, it would also, in my head, it would be a bigger headache to put steel on and have to, you'd have to cut panels and you'd have to face it all, and it would, you know, it'd be probably a bigger headache to keep it than to not.
Kurt, what's your opinion on that?
On that particular opening? It's been an ongoing problem. I personally would love to see it closed. Is it worth fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars? I don't know. There's a lot of headaches, though, especially with ice and huge ice. Personal preference is I'd like to see it closed.
All right, I agree, and I agree with that. My, my problem is with these bids sometimes. And not changing the subject, but I saw a bid for some signees the other day, and they must have been using gold-plated steel because I built the pontoon carrier for less than they were asking for what they were doing, the steel in the sign. And I'm just kind of frustrated with this process, but not necessarily here, I guess, but all over. But I will make the motion to accept A and R's bid with alternate A.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
We'll keep you posted as far as it goes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, next we got item number seven. It's project number ninety, street improvements. How many highways? Ninety-six and one hundred. And we have Bob Schliemann to talk to that. Robert, can you hear us?
I can hear you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Let me know if you can hear me. If I can speak louder, please. Yeah, I just hope everybody got the outline in your packet I provided.
Yes.
Just wanted to provide an update on the project. Basically, the design is complete. We are expecting an advance for that project on April twenty-ninth, year of 2020. Updated estimated project cost total is around two million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand. The estimated Otter Tail County portion of that is one point six nine million, with the estimated city's portion being one point three million. Obviously, those numbers will change once the bids are open, but those are our estimated costs at this time. Estimated project schedule, we're in the process right now of advertising bids. Hopefully, the word construction contract in May commence construction in June. Substantially complete construction for this year in September or October. And then our plan is to leave the bituminous workhorse until next year and construct that in June of 2021, like we have done in all the other projects. As far as funding goes, we have submitted application information to the PFA. Typically, what those, PFA funding consists of is a twenty-year loan term, and typically, interest rates are one to two percent. Typically, they're around closer to one percent to two, but they're always about one to two percent. So there's a few things that I'd like to discuss tonight as far as moving forward. Since the city, the best plan is assessing a portion of the underground utility and/or street improvements that are the city's portion, we would want to have a public hearing. I actually put a resolution in everybody's packet. It's a resolution receiving report and calling hearing on improvement. This is required for Chapter four of the United States statute. And we have a public hearing prior to the award of the construction contract. Right now, I'm proposing to have that meeting at your first regular scheduled council meeting in May, which I believe is the twelfth, and the time being at five thirty. I'm sure the question is being asked in some folks' head right now, what if we have to continue with the social distancing and everything like that? Don and I have had that discussion a couple times. The latest was earlier today. Do you think we can accommodate that, either by using Zoom or some other method? But I guess right now, what I would ask that we do is pass this resolution, setting that public hearing, and if we have to do it on some actual virtual format, I think we can make that happen. So does anybody have any questions on the public hearing or that resolution?
None here.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twelve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried.
The second thing that I'd like to discuss as far as moving forward is right now Apex, or we are under a contract with Otter Tail County to provide design and construction services for the reconstruction of Crissant ninety-six and one hundred. We are not under a contract with Otter Tail County to provide services regarding the PFA funding, application, and administration services, special assessment services, as well as easements. Typically, when we do a project through the, for the city, we're under contract with the city, and it typically includes these types of services. This being a little bit of a unique situation, since we are under contract with Otter Tail County and not the city of Pelican Rapids. What I've done is I've actually provided a proposal, a letter proposal outlining those services that we would provide in relation to, again, funding, application, and administration assessment, related services, as well as easement related services. We were required to go and purchase, required some easements for the installation of some of these underground utilities on this project, so we did have to provide some easement services, which sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. And hopefully, everybody got a chance to review the proposal that I provided. The total estimated fees for those funding services I have estimated right now is nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Assessment assistance, I have got down eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Easement acquisition services, I have got an estimated five thousand dollars, for a total of thirty-three thousand dollars for those services. It would be invoice notes on a time and expense basis. Right now, those are estimated fees. So I mean, if we put in, you know, if the actual time record that we've got in for those is only twenty-five thousand dollars, thousand dollars. Are there any questions on that proposal?
Any questions, gentlemen? Don't hear me here.
No, not here.
If there aren't any questions, I guess I would request that the city go ahead and accept that proposal and authorize us to continue providing the services regarding this project.
Require a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Anything else, Robert?
That's all I have this evening. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We'll go on to item number eight. We have the one hundred jurisdictional transfer to the, to the city consideration. That was in our packet, and I believe we had Chuck Roddy who's joining us. Chuck, can you hear?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, there you are. Yes. Chuck, do you want to go over this and sort of give us a recap of, of the summary that's in our packet?
Sure, I can do that quickly here. As you all know, back in two thousand and fifteen, prior to that, county went through a long-range planning process for our county roads, ended up with our twenty twenty transportation plan. As part of that plan, there were several growth actions in various cities that don't really fit the county's system anymore. And they were there for a reason at one time, but really don't really serve a transportation purpose for the county at this point anymore. So there were several identified that should be turned back to the various cities or townships and that sort of thing. And there were also a few that were suggested to be turned up. So this particular route came up, but as we were originally going to resurface it back in two thousand and eighteen with it was, and at that time, the city indicated that all it needed to do some other underground water, sewer, and that sort of thing. So they wanted to hold off at that time and go more of the full reconstruction of this, as well as a part of Highway ninety-six. So that kind of triggered us to start looking at turning most of them back to the city. It was the original idea, to pull some more on the list. Have some discussions on Highway ninety-six. Since you have a bridge there, it'd be something the city doesn't really have the wherewithal to manage or to maintain or repair in the future. You'd be the only city in Otter Tail County other than Fergus Falls that has a bridge. So we didn't want to leave the city without burden. So we dropped the idea of turning over ninety-six, but we would like to pursue turning over Highway one hundred. In the latter, I did, you know, go through some more explanation of what we had planned for the roads. Highway ninety-six was reconstructed within the last twenty years, and, you know, from our standpoint, it was still in pretty good shape and didn't really need any work done. But, you know, to cooperate with the city, we were going to go ahead and redo that one-block area. And then also changed Highway one hundred from a resurgence into a reconstruction, which just can see increased art cost substantially. You know, we're looking at spending about one point one million more than we originally planned to spend back in two thousand and eighteen. I guess it was just a good time to have a conversation with the city about if you would be willing to accept this as a jurisdictional transfer to the city. You know, we'd keep Highway ninety-six. We can turn Highway one hundred over to the city. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Questions from the council? I guess I have one. Chuck, if we did not pass this consideration, what is the alternative then?
Well, the county can pass a road down to a city. I don't think there's a desire to do that if the city's not interested. So I don't really think that's on the table. But, you know, we can, just like the state can turn over our road to us. We don't really have a say in it, but they don't do that either. So, and we're trying to work with folks.
Yes.
So we're not really looking at that. But I guess the one feature that came up during the design on Highway one hundred is that the curve by the no doesn't meet state aid standards. And as long as we were planning to turn this over to the city, I think we maybe don't really need to meet state aid standards. So if they're wrong, we probably want to design it to state aid standard, which would most likely make that into a more ninety-degree intersection versus the two light curves that are around that corner at this point. And I have to really look to see, you know, what kind of impact that would have as far as right of it and that sort of thing. But that would probably be the major change, would be needed for the current project. Beyond that, you know, I guess this is our first attempt on trying to turn a road back back to one of the cities. We had some preliminary discussion with a couple others. We haven't gotten as far, so. It's going to work out.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Council, any questions for Mr. Roddy?
I guess I don't understand quite all the ramifications of doing this. Did you hear that, Chuck?
Yeah, I guess for the difference that, you know, right now, we pay the city a minor amount of money. You know, is it sixteen, seventy-hundred dollars a year to do some minor amount of maintenance on it? Say, if we turn it over, it'll be responsible for all the maintenance. However, if you're going to have a brand-new road, it's going to be it for, you know, thirty-plus years. They'll have to do, you know, the maintenance on it for the next thirty years. It's not going to be much to do on it. Eventually, it will need more work, but all roads due.
This is, I just, I'm kind of unclear right now where, exactly where that runs.
This is around the high school?
Around it, yeah.
On the northwest and south side of the high school?
Right, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I was in the right spot, so.
All three sides except for where Island fifty-nine is.
Right. Will the county still come in and do all the surface work then? Even if we take it back, or is this too, so the county can be relieved of the surface work in the...
We would be basically done with this road if only once it's turned back or turned over to the city. But it all weren't, any future projects or work would be the city's, not the county's. And that's part of what, I mean, the transportation plan, you know, our system is so big. We keep looking at things that didn't really fit the system. Obviously, this is one of them. Those around the school, it doesn't, doesn't connect anything else within the county or anything like that, so.
If I could clarify too, just everybody's clear, I think to answer your question, Kurt, the county would still pay for what's supposed to be done this year. They would basically pay for everything, and then they would turn it over once all the work is done. So basically, the city would be updating a brand-new road.
Thank you for the clarification, Bob.
We would still pay for this current project.
Yeah, that, that was my question. So essentially, we would be being turned over a brand-new, we would have new infrastructure by the, by our expense, and, and the county would be doing the surface work. So we would be essentially receiving a brand-new road from the county.
That's correct. In this case. That's correct, in this case.
Right.
Well, I'll move that we, uh, do this traditional jurisdictional transfer to the city of Pelican Rapids on Casaw One Hundred.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion?
I wish Brian was here. Do you know, does he have any opinion on this, or has he had discussion on this, or...
I don't think it matters to him one way or the other.
Hey, they...
We plow it, we take care of it anyway.
We keep it, yeah. Just be pothole work and things that we'll have to maintain.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Anything else, Chuck?
Aye, so, you know, we'll, we'll probably have to put some paperwork of some form together. Like I said, we haven't done this before, so it's been a new territory, we still have to put some paperwork in, future, and, and formalize the actual transfer. Uh, so we'll, we'll get that, it won't be right away, because we'll probably go through with the, like you talked about, thinking the project and have it turned over when it's done. Uh, but thank you very much for doing this, and, uh, we'll get that later in the year or early next year when the time comes.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Item number nine is Project Eighty-Nine Colony Apartment Update. Don, did you have something there?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with the council, we had a remote pre-con meeting on April ninth. This is the project out for the colony apartments, extending the water and sewer infrastructure from the city out to the apartment building on West One-O-eight. Um, the contractors, various utility providers, Apex Engineering, all was a part of that pre-con meeting. And the plan is for HOG to start work the first or second week of May, um, with the intent of being substantially complete by June twenty-sixth of this year. And then they'll, that'll get us through, uh, where the street and everything is in except for the workhorse, and they'll come back sometime between June first and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, to put that workhorse down. So you should see them start digging out there in just a couple of weeks.
You said substantially completed by June what?
June twenty-sixth of this year. And then we'll basically let it set through a winter and come back and put the workhorse down next June, twenty twenty-one. And that's really all I had. I know Bob's still on, if he wanted to add anything to that.
Do you have anything, Bob?
No, I don't. I think Don covered it pretty well. Thank you, Don.
When's the completion date for the apartment building?
I don't know that. I, I think, I think when he originally was, was presenting to the council, I, I'm, I'm thinking he was hoping that people would be moving in in August timeframe. But I can, I can see where they're at with the project and what their tentative occupancy dates are, see if it's changed.
Okay, any more discussion on that topic? If not, we'll go to item number ten, City Light Transfer Ottertail Power Update. Don?
Yeah, if you recall, um, the last meeting you guys took, or, yeah, took action to, to start transferring the lights back. And I just wanted to share that I've got two different documents from Ottertail Power that the city council need to consider, and I've just kind of been reading through and reviewing them, and I've got some questions for Ottertail Power too, and there's some typos and that type of thing. So I'll get the documents all squared away, and they'll be on the next council agenda, and they'll be in the packet. And then we'll have Ottertail Power also, um, remote in or whatever to meeting or come to a meeting or whatever at that, at that point, and, and kind of go over the documents. And that's just all I needed, all I had on that is just an update.
Any questions for Don? Okay, if not, we'll go on to item number eleven is Planning Commission Update. There's two different resolutions in your packet, and there's going to be a property owner coming to sit in on the second one we'll discuss. We'll go to the Resolution Twenty Twenty dash zero three, uh, resolution recommending the city council the purchase of property. Do we have John Wall there on the line?
No, I'm supposed to present.
John is listening. John, hang on a second, but...
I had talked to him last nineteen... So, yeah, we have a couple of resolutions and a, and a couple, a third item and a, uh, FYI at the end. So the Resolution Twenty Twenty dash O three is the, uh, Park Board request for the purchase of the Glaibarkowitz property to the south of the Old Legion Hall, is what the locals would know it as, or on the west side of the Snowmobile Bridge that they, they put in. Um, it's the property that borders the river. Do you want me to read the resolution, or...
If you want to, go ahead. We're waiting for somebody for the second one anyways.
Yeah, okay. Uh, whereas the Park Board for the City of Pelican Rapids and Planning Commission recommend a public improvement project to continue to enhance and develop the City of Pelican Rapids public parks. And whereas the City of Pelican Rapids has received previous grants from Partnership for Health to complete a bikeable community workshop, and a bike and pedestrian path for the city and the City of Pelican Rapids has established a signed rocking path system. And whereas in an effort to become a more active community by providing more options for residents and visitors, the Park Board of the City of Pelican Rapids and Planning Commission of the City of Pelican Rapids would like to enhance the use of our river resources for public recreation. And whereas an opportunity, an opportunity to provide more access to our river resources and to expand the City of Pelican Rapids public park system has been made available through the purchase of land, and whereas the public, excuse me, the Park Board of the City of Pelican Rapids and Planning Commission of the City of Pelican Rapids are in agreement with a recommendation of such efforts to acquire said land. And whereas the Park Board of the City of Pelican Rapids and Planning Commission of the City of Pelican Rapids are recommending that the city council of the City of Pelican Rapids coordinate all efforts and take all actions necessary to purchase all of John M. Glaibarkowitz's property, parcel seven six zero 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 nine nine zero four nine nine zero zero zero, lots seven and eight, and parcel seven six zero 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 nine nine zero five zero 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 zero, lots nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, located at One-O-eight Midway in the City of Pelican Rapids, Minnesota. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this Planning Commission of the City of Pelican Rapids hereby recommends that the city council of the City of Pelican Rapids take the necessary actions to acquire both of those parcels to be used as identified above.
On the speed dial?
Pardon?
Speed dial?
So that's the first resolution.
There's, there's a, somebody that's just identified as number thirty, I don't know who it is, I asked, but they didn't respond. I don't know who that is. Council have any comments, Don?
Yeah, so basically, what will happen, if you guys approve this resolution, it just, it just kind of gives us, in a sense, council's, um, approval to, for Greg Larson and I to contact the property owner and come up with a final, um, an agreed upon, uh, a price. And then, uh, once we have that agreed upon price, that would come back to the council too. Because this, this is just basically giving us the go-ahead to negotiate, uh, for the purch, purchase of that, if you guys want to do that. Once we do that, we've got the terms of it ironed out, and we'll bring them back to council for final approval.
Do we have an idea what that's going to cost the city?
Well, um...
I guess I was under the impression that we had a number that, that was presented, didn't, didn't Kate present a number, kind of?
Kate had a number, but that was basically a number that was discussed between her and, and the property owner, and had never been any, there'd been no, uh, city discussion with that property owner on it. And at that time, what he was looking for was, uh, I think something like splitting the closing costs and, um, the city paying roughly sixteen thousand dollars for it or something like that, which is the estimated market value based on the county's website. So, uh, but without, without talking to him myself, I don't know exactly what all him and Kate had talked about. That was just what Kate had, had mentioned. And that's why I said, you know, for, to, to do the resolution in such a way that it just gives us the, the go-ahead to make contact with him and iron out them details, but it's roughly about, I'm guessing that sixteen, seventeen thousand range, once we split closing costs, et cetera.
Liquor store funds.
What's that?
Liquor store funds.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to move ahead to acquire the, or purchase this property?
Not to purchase, just open up, line of communication for bargain for, I would say. We could, I think we're safe in finding out how much he's looking for the city to invest in that property, so I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion and a second? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Next, uh, resolution, Planning Commission Resolution Number PC Two Zero Two Zero Dash Zero Four. Kevin?
Would you also like me to read this one? Or no?
I think...
Okay, so this is the, uh, Keith and Shelley Gummeringer property that's located just to the west of the Creamery Apartments, One-O-eight and, was that Mill Street? No, not Mill Street, uh...
West Mill and First Avenue.
Yeah. Um, they are, the, the plan is for them to make the upstairs of that, or the upper level of that building a resident, a residence, single, single-family residence, and the lower portion of that will remain commercial. And the Planning Commission recommends allowing that to happen. They're asking for a conditional use permit.
The Gummeringers are with us here this evening. Does council have any questions for them? Do the Gummeringers have anything to add?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
I'll second the building. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Thank you.
Uh, the third item we have is, we would like to recommend to vacate a seat on the Planning Commission, uh, remove one of the sitting members, and appoint, have the city council appoint somebody to replace Patrick Patterson, Planning Commission member.
Do you have that, a replacement in...
We do not.
What was the reason? Uh, because he doesn't attend, or...
Right, he's, uh, he's attended two meetings in the fifteen months that he's been on. So, and, and he's, you know, he doesn't work in town anymore, so I'm, I'm not, I don't know...
His might not fit his, his schedule anymore?
But in the same note, he hasn't returned any correspondence or any phone calls to, to find out that problem, so...
You're looking for a motion?
Yeah, we're asking that he would, he would be removed, and then we'll, we'll look for a replacement.
I'll make that motion that we take the Planning Council's recommendation on this.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion.
I don't know the guy, but he called me once or twice. When I tried to return his phone call, I got the most convoluted message system that brought me to someplace over in Fargo that, and I don't, I've never met the guy, so I don't know, but...
Did he call you in reference to...
Well, he called me in reference to, uh, a piece of property and telling that the city was making a decision on it. I don't know what, if he just lives over in Fargo now, or what he does, but...
I believe he still, he still is out on Swan addition. Yeah, he's, he's still a community member, but...
Changed jobs, apparently?
Yeah, he doesn't, I don't think he works out of Ringdall Ambulance anymore. He might work for Ringdall, but not out of the Pelican.
Please.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
And the final, just kind of a, for your information thing is, we are moving our Planning Commission meetings to the last Monday of the month, starting in June. Uh, it'll still be at five o'clock, just to kind of make it easier for us to get, to act on things and get the information to council so that the council is able to look at it before we expect you to make a decision, excuse me, a decision on it. That's it.
Any questions for Kevin? If not, thank you, Kevin. Item number twelve, City Administrator Report, Don.
Since the last meeting, basically, I've been working to, to get this all set up. Obviously, you can see with the technology, it's a little bit more, uh, work than usual. I spent time reviewing and revising the Park Board, Planning Commission Land Purchase Resolution, and then also the, the Planning Commission's Special Use Permit Resolution. Uh, I can, I'm continuing conversation with a potential business owner, and hopefully before too long, you guys will hear more about that, um, possibly the next meeting. I held, uh, meetings with the emergency management team to discuss and just kind of give an update on the state of the different city departments and city facilities, and we'll continue to meet on Monday mornings, um, in, in the near future also. I can, I continued setup and discussion with staff and elected officials on the use of all these technologies and computers, and obviously by the, what we kind of experienced today, we're close, but there's some tweaks that need to be done so that we're all on the same, some, same page with that. Uh, on April ninth, I attended a remote, the pre-con meeting that, that Bob and I kind of shared with you regarding the, the colony apartments, improvements of city infrastructure. I attended a ro, a remote meeting with Ottertail County's Community Development Agency, also a remote meeting of the Ottertail County Emergency Manager. And, um, on a weekly basis, the, the CDA and the Emergency Management Department do go to meetings, uh, and they invite the police departments and, uh, city, city administration to just be a part of the discussions, to kind of get a feel for what everybody's working on and what they're doing during this COVID-nineteen stuff, so, um, and then other than that, I attended the Planning Commission meeting last evening, on the thirteenth. That's what I've been up to.
Any questions for Don?
The EDA meeting was about, uh, their potential business?
The CDA meeting?
Yeah.
No, no. That was just a general, weekly thing that they, that they've been doing, hosting a go-to meeting, uh, and there's different, there's different agencies that, uh, that attend that meeting, myself. Uh, there's different human, uh, human services organizations that also attend that meeting. Ottertail County HRA also remoted into that meeting. So it's just general housing and economic development, uh, people that attend typically. It's not tied to any one particular project.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Don.
Item number thirteen, Mayor Report, a few items, uh, that I've accomplished. I attended the Pelican Rapids City Council Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting here at City Hall on April second, as all, did all of the council members that are here this evening. I visited with Pelican Rapids Janie Ol, Human Resources Department, Reg...
I visited with Pelican Rapids Janio, Human Resources Department regarding the work strength at their facility, uh, met with Chief of Police State and regarding social distancing observations here within our community, uh, continued to, uh, attend a couple of mayor's columns in the Pelican Rapids press relating to our city operating procedure, procedures dealing with this pandemic. Attended two, uh, Pelican Rapids Emergency Management Teams meetings here at City Hall, I also visited with, uh, State Senator Billing of Rethan, Representative Bud Nornish regarding, COVD-19 here in Minnesota, and met with Administrator Soga regarding this evening's, uh, council meeting agenda. Any questions? Okay, item number 14, adjournment, seeing no other items on this evening's agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Meeting adjourned, thank you.